To call the regular meeting of the Waterloo Community School District Board of Education for order.
And turn on my microphone all at the same time. Will you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you, and now stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll read the mission statement. The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community. Before we get started, and I do want to say into some of our business, I do want to say that we're a few board members down this evening. Especially, I want to give some thanks to Mike Young, who is not here this evening because he's down in Des Moines testifying at the budget hearings. And I just wanted to make sure that you all knew that. So, we've got some people on vacation, we've got some people out, but we're still going to forge ahead this evening. So, with that, I'd like to call, our next item on our agenda is the Teammates Mentoring Program, and January is National Mentoring Month, and I would like to ask Ellen Vanderloo to come up, please. Yes, so the green light's on.
Got it. Well, I'd like to come before the board in January because it is National Mentoring Month. And just to remind you of our mentoring program, and I hope that you saw in Sunday's celebration section, the listing of all the mentors that we have here in the Waterloo Schools. I think it's quite an impressive list. And this is now the fifth year, whoa, that we've had the Teammates Mentoring Program in place. And I just ran my numbers today, and as of today, we have 135 matches. So, I'm happy with that, but of course, always trying to make more. And it's an ongoing process of recruiting and training and matching. So, we do have matches in all 18 of our school buildings. And if you ever want to look, I have a sheet that outlines by grade the matches. And just kind of looking at it, in 5th grade, we have 27 matches, 6th grade, 25, 7th grade, 10, and 11th grade, 15. So, even in the older grades, we do have a number of matches, which is great to see. I wanted to draw the board's attention to the fact that we did have a mentor appreciation lunch, and Mrs. Shanley and Dr. Lindemann were there, and Dr. Barney spoke, and really appreciated the support for that. And also, we just wanted to be sure that the board knew about the efforts that the Teammates Program has made to support our program here in Waterloo. Des Moines Adams, who is our secondary consultant, has just put in a lot of hours procuring scholarships that are solely for students who are Teammates mentees. So, when they graduate, they have the opportunity, I think we have several scholarships now at Hawkeye, $1,000 each, and several at UNI. And of course, there's a number of Nebraska colleges that offer scholarships. But it's nice to see that they're looking at these local schools. And I told him now he needs to work in the University of Iowa. But, and then also just drawing your attention to the fact that we are doing some STEM mentoring now, especially for young women. And it's been really exciting to see some of our professional women stepping up and becoming mentors. And it's nice that their businesses, their place of work, is allowing them to leave and come to either Hoover or to Lou Henry to meet with these young women and encourage them in the STEM field. And then also, just drawing your attention to the fact that Teammates also has written grants specifically, like to the Walmart Corporation to fund our background checks, because each background check costs $35. And so far this year, I haven't had to pay for any, that they've continued to be covered by the Walmart grant. So, I feel like we pay $1,500 a year to be a part of the bigger Teammates Program, but I think we get a lot in return, and a lot of good support, too. So, does anyone have any questions about the Teammates Mentoring Program?
I thought it was cool, when I looked through the names in the celebration, former students are in there. A couple of recent graduates that I saw, and I thought, that's awesome to piggyback on their experiences and have them become mentors. So, good job with that.
We have a good contingency from UNI. There's actually a student group called PALS, Panthers allied with local schools, that supports the Teammates Mentoring Program. So, and I think I've had several people say, you know, I always thought mentoring was kind of retired people, older people that had time to mentor. When you look at that list, there's college students, there's working people, there are retired people who are wonderful mentors, but we have mentors from all ages.
I just want to thank you for your sincere passion for what you do.
Well, thank you. It's a lot of fun. I enjoy it. So, thank you for your support.
Next is the time on our agenda with information from individuals and delegations. Is there anyone who would like to address the board this evening? That I'm... I don't think so. I think, all right then. Okay, so, yeah. We're not going to embarrass anybody, so. All right. Well, then, moving on to the consent agenda. This evening's consent agenda consists of the minutes of our January 12, 2015, regular board meeting, personnel appointments and adjustments, bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings, the West High trip to Washington DC, and the year-long student teaching pilot partnership. Are there any items that any board members would like to have removed? Any? Item E? Great. Anything else?
Item F.
Item F? All right. So, we're left with items B, C, and D. Can I get a motion on the table? And a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, those three items, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, same sign. Chair says aye, votes aye. And then let's move on to item E on page 17 for discussion, the West High trip. And let's get this motion on the floor while they're coming to the, it's on page 17. And the recommended motion is the Board of Education approve travel for one West High student to Washington DC for the ACTE National Policy Seminar, March 1st through the 15th, 2015.
Fifth.
Fifth, excuse me.
You can let us stay an extra time.
Wow, that's a long trip, 1st through the 5th, excuse me, 2015. Thanks, and a second?
Second.
Second, and any discussion?
Anything you guys would like to know specifically, Marie can talk about her experiences, things like that.
Why don't you just start by telling us a little overview of the trip?
Well, from what I believe, because I haven't had the full agenda given to me yet, that's going to start on Wednesday. We're going to start having webinars over the phone for every Wednesday for the next four weeks, I think it is. We're going to go up there for the National Policy Seminar, and we're going to go to different sessions within that for those five days that we're there. And we're going to learn about different funding that we get for the STEM programs and from the Perkins funding. And we're going to learn how to better it and keep it going, and just continue on the right path.
Marie, how were you chosen for this?
Um, well, I'm currently Vice President of Skills USA in the Iowa chapter.
Okay.
So, it was kind of everybody else in the, I can't think of the word.
All the different CTSOs every year send different students. And so, last year, I don't know if you guys remember, but we had Ariane Olegich, who was able to go, and he was our BPA representative. Well, this year, Skills USA, the other student club I run, was offered. Marie's a second-year state officer, and so they decided, there was numerous students that all asked to go, and the Skills USA Board of Directors, not Board of Directors, because I'm on that, but the director actually decided which student was allowed to attend. So, Marie was selected out of the eight or seven officers.
It's like seven or eight. Great.
How many students from Iowa will be attending? Are you the only one?
There are four. There's me, and then there's three other people from different organizations who are Iowa.
Is it a pretty large group? That's going to be a gathering there?
Um, as far as I know, from what I've been told, it's a pretty big group.
The National Policy Seminar is actually what it's called, and there's lots of teachers and other people that are invested in education that always attend this. Department of Ed is actually who's putting on our webinars for us, so we're working with Dell Hoover, and we will be traveling with him. And he's kind of the one that walks the students all through the process, so they learn about the metros before we even get there, because a lot of Iowa kids have never been to a metro, things like that. So, it's a great experience. And I was just so impressed with the process last year, and we're looking at doing that again. I've actually, they're working on funding, and they're actually trying to get funding from me, so Perkins won't even have to pay for that as well. And so, hopefully, we'll get that funding taken care of. But that was a special grant or something that they're working on, and he said, if I get to do this, you're going to be the one I'm going to choose. So, I said, okay. And then I will help chaperone other students as well to attend the sessions, so.
Well, it looks like a pretty full agenda for those three days. Sorry, I wasn't sending you on a two-week trip. Looks like you're going from 8 to 5 every day, so.
And what is really a great experience is all the actually meeting with the legislators that the students do. I was so impressed last year how many times we actually spoke with, you know, the people, the actual legislators and representatives, House Representatives, things like that. It was really an amazing experience. And I just have to tell you a funny experience, the Capitol closed down because they had two inches of snow the first day we were there last year. We're like, really? But of course, the Iowa guys were hardy, and they were there, so we still got to meet with them in the mornings. And we got all of our, they were like, oh, this is nothing, we're here. So, but yeah. So, it's, and Marie is a great girl, and I think this is such an experience for her to be able to go and see the Capitol, which she's never been before, and, you know, so to learn about the process.
So, Marie, what do you hope to gain from this experience?
I'm hoping to gain more understanding about what the Perkins funding is, because I know my little sister. She's in 7th grade right now at Central. She's really interested in all the STEM courses, all of that, everything that I'm into, basically, because I've taken Project Lead the Way classes and all that different kind of stuff. And she's really interested in that. So, I'm hoping that by me going through all this, I can explain to her how much she's actually getting out of it, how much everybody's actually putting into it just so she can have it. And then maybe she'll like actually enjoy it a little bit more, and I can get her further into it. But I'm hoping I can gain more understanding on how everything works, and just basically an overview, and hopefully, a little bit in-depth of how much that funding really helps us, and how it became, basically.
I hope you'll keep us posted with what you learn. You can always send us a note and let us know how it goes.
Yeah.
Questions? Anybody else?
All right. Okay, thanks, Marie. Have a great trip.
Thank you.
So, the recommended motion is on the floor. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. And now we'll move on to item F, which is on page 24. Now, go ahead and get that motion on the table. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education accept the year-long student teaching pilot, supporting funding from UNI in the amount of $10,000 for Becker and Lincoln Elementary Schools, as well as any additional funding that might be provided through the grant. And a second?
Second.
Great. Any discussion? I don't know who pulled this.
I did, I did. I just wanted, does Debbie have something to say? Because I think it's an exciting thing.
Well, she's coming up. Do you mind if I just make a couple of statements to? The state of Iowa has really been, as part of the teacher leadership grant, they have really, or teacher quality, they have really been looking at ways to bolster the practice of education. And so, one of the things that they did is they looked across the nation at how to enhance the pool of candidates that we have. And so, they selected two universities, or two colleges to have year-long prep programs. So, they would take, instead of students doing, you know, 16 weeks of student teaching, they would do an entire year. And I believe it was Dort and UNI. Am I right on that? I think it was Dort and UNI.
I think you might be right.
I think so. And so, they tried to pick one private and one public. And so, those two schools are working with districts, and UNI is working with Waterloo Schools. And so, what would you like to add to that student, the year-long student teaching prep?
I don't have much to add to that, other than what we wrote here, or any questions that I can answer. I will say that it has been a huge learning process, both for those from UNI, the pre-service educators, as well as our principals and our teachers. I had just gotten an email, actually, from Melissa Stagel, and she said she wished this could be a two-year study so that we could take it into the second year and benefit from what we have learned this first year. It's very interesting that I actually had anticipated that the UNI students would be in the classroom every single day for an entire year, and that wasn't the way that it was scheduled out. They actually were in the classrooms from the very beginning, prior to school starting, the first days of school. But then they also had some classes back on campus, but they also had classes, their methods classes, in the school. So, then they could go out and watch the application in a classroom, or they could help with that application. But by the second, third quarter, they were fully invested in the school. The really great part, why we wanted to jump at that, is I know the quality of the pre-service educators coming out of UNI, and it's high quality. And this puts more adults in our classrooms. And so, there is a great advantage to that. Now, there will be an ending evaluation, an ending summary of the project. I'd like to be able to bring some of that back to the board with JD Cryer from UNI, and with Melissa Stagel from Becker, and also Brad Schweppe from Lincoln. And kind of like to just give you some information about that at that time, and what we learned from that.
One thing I was just going to add, too, both Dr. Lee and I have been attending the meetings, the kind of the update meetings every couple of months, and we have one coming up, I think, shortly. But it's interesting to see the different kinds of analyses that they are doing to track the success of this and to be able to report it out. For example, one of the things that they are tracking is something I hadn't necessarily thought of. But a student-teacher, usually the typical format is they arrive on scene, and they, you know, spend some time getting used to the climate, and they watch the teacher, and they interact, and they may take the lead a little bit more each week, until at some point in time, they actually are the lead teacher. And then the teacher kind of watches and gives feedback, and sometimes even gives them a little bit of space so that they are actually the teacher. But with being in the classroom for three-quarters of the year, we don't want our teachers to be out of the room for three-quarters of the year, or to not be taking the lead. And so, they've really been working at that, I guess, almost a ratio of how much time they've worked on a co-teaching model, so that it's kind of the student-teacher and the teacher working side by side for a portion of that time. But if they always do co-teaching, then that student-teacher will not get the full experience of what it's like to be the lead teacher. So, they're really trying to work out that ratio, and they're watching that closely, they're reporting, they're taking stats on that, research, and gathering some information. So, that conversation is very, I guess, really exciting and interesting at minimum to find out, so.
In addition, the journals, they keep journals, and they're looking at the data, the qualitative data in those journals. One of the things that they had noticed is the shift in their thinking from being a UNI student to actually being a teacher. And they're able to see that in those journals. And I just think that's very rich research, and it will be interesting to see where it goes from this point on. So, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer what I can, or Jane can.
Well, it's always seemed common sense, when I've been, when my years in the schools and seeing many student teachers come through, and I could never figure out why just a semester, because some of them are just getting the hang of it. Or sometimes we would have a student-teacher come in that had already student taught, like in the high school, and now she was doing elementary, and she had a little more experience under her belt. So, it just seemed like it would be common sense that you would have them for the whole year. But I can see how you're trying to incorporate, so.
Right.
The teacher is teaching too sometimes during that year.
The other thing that's interesting about the model that we've used before for student teaching is the student teachers either saw the beginning of the year, or they saw the end of the year, but they never saw both. And those both are critical bookends to a year, and so they will get that experience.
And I believe there are 13, correct? 13, I believe there are 13?
I think there's 12.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, and at the beginning of the year, there were actually, I think, four more that did only the first semester, and that was, JD could explain that to you, I cannot, so.
But, so then the student-teacher actually commits to teaching for a whole year?
Yes.
Get double the credits that they would normally usually are getting.
And again, their methods, many of their method classes are embedded into that time. So, that if you went out there in September, you would not see those students in the classes every single day, all day long. Because they do have their methods classes, which is part of the normal process, the normal sequence of courses that they take. And, but those oftentimes, more than not, those courses were taking place then in the schools, rather than on the campus, although some of them did take place on the campus.
So, does it expedite their years at UNI for teaching, for their BA?
No, it does not expedite their years. It does not lengthen them, lengthen them either. It's a change of location for them.
So, that's basically.
And Debbie, can you explain just a little bit, because I remember when I was going through methods courses, my mom was like, what are those?
The methods courses are the, how do you teach science? How do you teach social studies? How do you teach literacy and math courses? It kind of is that content deep class that says, here's how you teach this content.
I can see both, I have a daughter in student teaching right now in Des Moines. And, but for the financial aspect, for the student, that's, I think, a big commitment to not work for basically nine months, as they encourage the student teachers not to work. So, financially, that could deter some students, I would think.
It could potentially.
But then the experience that they get might make them more employable, too. So, you know, it's hard.
The other thing we've done is we've asked, and Dr. Smith has agreed to that, that they get, each one of these teachers who have gone through this successfully will get an interview in our district. Doesn't mean they'll necessarily get a job, but they will get an interview.
Anything else? Do keep us posted on the results. I think you're right, it's fascinating research, so.
I will do that.
Love to hear it, so. Thank you, Debbie. With that, all those in favor of approving the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. The next item on our agenda is the 21st Century High School Architectural Services. It's on page 25, it's item G. And I will go ahead and get this motion on the table. The recommended motion is the Board of Education approve preliminary architectural services with Structure Architects of Waterloo with a fee not to exceed $25,000 for the 21st Century High School plan. And a second? Thanks. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Lindemann for a little background.
Sure. About three years ago, we started a high school task force that would really investigate the type of programming that we have for students. And we were really looking at, as it ended, we were really looking at enhancing professional technical education. So, because when we visited schools, we noticed that, that had that, we noticed that it took a little bit different facility. And because we really have some updates that are needed at both East and West in our high schools anyway, we began looking at what we would, what our programming and what our buildings would look like in the future. And so, those who have stayed up to date on the high school reform efforts know that we held town hall meetings this fall, and we really listened to people. We took different themes, theme A, B, and C, to the community and got some input. And one of the things that we found out, earlier last spring, we had released some very, very ballpark numbers. And they were just for different options. I think at that time, there might have been eight options on the table. And so, we released some numbers that said, you know, this is about what this could cost, and it was a range. And as we worked with our task force, as we worked with our community, as we listened to folks during the town hall meetings, we knew that we really needed to get some better, better numbers and better specifics to that. So, we are, what we're looking at tonight really is the work that we are doing behind the scenes to get some, a better feel for what those themes would cost. Now, I want to add one other piece to that. If you are, for those who are familiar with all the different buildings in Waterloo, they will know that our elementaries are all really fairly new and are really in beautiful, nice buildings. And our middle schools have been, you know, renovated or updated to a certain extent, a greater extent than what our high schools have been. There are pieces of East and West and Expo that have been renovated, but there is definitely work to be done. So, regardless of whether we were looking at this for the 21st century or not, we would definitely be looking at, at what would it take to update East, to update West, to update Expo. The reason it's listed as a 21st century topic, or I guess title on here, is really because we need to do it now instead of looking at it for later. We could, you know, we could look at East and West renovations in the next year or two. But right now, because we're really looking at the high school reform, it makes sense to look at them all at the same time. So, we have been meeting, actually, with, we've been working with Structure. We actually did interviews of architects. The facilities committee, which is a subset of the board, sat in on those interviews, and we just really looked at what every firm had to offer. And we did select to do some of this pre-work with Structure. So, we've been meeting with them pretty much weekly, not every single week, but working through just a variety of things. And they've been coming to the table with, you know, here's all the different rooms, here's what needs to be updated in each of those. And while we're at it, here's how we could tweak it a little bit so that it would really fit the goals of the 21st Century Task Force. So, that's just kind of an overview. I would probably, we have Shanley and Mike Kinsey and Lyle is not here tonight, but they are the subset that are on the facilities. So, I guess I'd ask if you guys have anything to add to that.
I guess, for my own benefit, and those on the committee, I think it's good for the public to know that this is a program-driven agenda. So, it is a facilities discussion, but it's being guided by those programs that will be part of the 21st century plan. So, decisions that are made are based on those specific programs that we would like to move forward in getting the facility and equipment needed to move those programs forward.
And I just want to echo what Dr. Lindemann said about it being prudent right now that we do this looking while we're talking about changes in programming, that we're doing it, we're dovetailing it and doing it together to be responsible, so that we're not remodeling something that we're going to then change in two years. We really are trying to put some forethought and foresight into this. So, it's a lot of work, but it's exciting.
And also that we are moving forward with some of these programs in, within the district, regardless of what the facilities comes out of, or what the bond might bring back. We are still moving forward with the bulk of the plan, and the facilities hopefully can come on board and be able to facilitate that education better.
Right, and I would add, too, just to echo that, there are certain, certain programs that we are looking at that really, we have the facilities already, they don't take a significant change. And so, we're looking at pursuing, you know, some changes in curriculum for those people who are either here. those people who were either here or were listening. When we, when we looked at the course catalog or the, the program of studies in December, we talked greatly about that. I think we, we spent almost an hour and a half as a board. You spent as a, about an hour and a half talking about that. So that's definitely related. And then, so the, we'll move forward as we can with, with the facilities and, and cost. I mean, some of them are relatively inexpensive to, to move forward with, so we would look at that as well.
Now, Jane, I guess, just in my financial aspect of it, the preliminary architectural services, what, what do you mean by that? Cause $25,000 is not that much money.
Right, and so really preliminary just means, and you could substitute that with pre-bond if you wanted to. We know that as we get closer to, once we've decided on exactly what we're going to do and then we're, we engage an architect or hire an architect to actually draw the plans for something, then that would be a, that would not be in the preliminary, that would be in the actual stages. But right now, we don't know exactly what the theme would be. As a matter of fact, I was at a meeting today and somebody said, do you, do you know, you don't know which theme? And I said, no, we really don't. We've got it, we want to enter cost into our discussion. We've heard what the public thinks, that those who attended the town hall and weighed in on it through various surveys, but cost is, is one of the factors we don't know. And that's what we're looking at right now, that's why it's listed as preliminary.
Skeleton.
Oh, mm-hmm. Yeah, we can, we talked about, it will, it will include some, some costing of, of bringing the buildings up to speed, up to date. It will include some schematic designs, which is, has been defined for me as kind of an overview design. It will not be specifics of plumbing and wiring and that, but, but kind of what would it look like? Where could, if we wanted to have this type of programming, where could that go? Within the, within the, the options, the three options. So it'll be just some overview designs.
And we started sort of with an inventory of what we currently have for space and how it's being used. And then we're looking at how, options to how to use it to the best of its ability.
Great question.
Anything else? All right, seeing none. All those in favor of approving the motion as read, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried.
And just, sorry for clarification, so is this committing structure to further plans or just to initial preliminary design?
Just to preliminary.
Everything will still go to bed as normal?
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely. They may still be one of the architects we use, but. The next item on our agenda are board policy changes. And I believe Tara Thomas is here this evening. We have a first reading and also a second reading. The first reading is item H on page twenty-seven.
So this first reading is regarding the policy changes six oh one point one on page twenty-eight for school day. The changes would reflect next year's plan to go to an hours versus days schedule.
And I would, I would add that those, the changes that are proposed here are actually legislative changes. So, Dr. McElte?
I'm back. It's a, it's a response to House File two fifteen. And the design of the changes in, in this policy, school day, is to give the board flexibility and the superintendent flexibility. The legislature has granted districts the choice between hours and days. If you choose days, you have a minimum of six hours that you must have. If you choose hours, as we are calculating, we're, we're going to have probably more than a six-hour day based upon our contractual obligations and our desire to ensure a full day for students. And we are currently making great progress on the calendar and we're excited about that adventure. But, but truly, this is more, this is truly a desire to give the board and the superintendent flexibility.
It indicates changing five and a half to six, so some people might read that as the school day is getting longer. Is there any plan to change starting or ending times?
Uh, no. And again, this was if we would choose the days calendar, we would be required to do the six, the six hours. Currently, right now, we're, we're fine and it would be not, no change in the school day. We just have a requirement that if a school, the school with the lowest amount of hours and days can be considered the district standard. And so we can't have a lot of flexibility amongst our schools, starting and ending times. But, but right now, I think we're, we're in pretty good shape as we move forward.
This just enables us to choose either way.
Correct.
Without getting in trouble with legislature.
Exactly, and also it allows the board and superintendent flexibility as potentially the future changes and other requirements come about, that you can go back and forth between hours and days and have that discretion.
And we've actually had two committees. One was an hours versus days committee. And they worked and, and looked at the legislation and House File to make a determination. And once they looked at the, actually, they've determined that we really don't meet the requirements of, of the days, so we will be looking at hours. But now they, they've turned their work over to the calendar committee, which is pretty representative. I mean, there's, there's quite a few people on the, the calendar committee. It's a pretty good sized committee. And so then they are, they are working.
Right.
At this point.
It's a, it's a large committee and again, we had a, a very good first meeting that got quite a bit done. And, you know, and again, as, as we move forward, we're looking at making sure that we give the best opportunity for our students and our professional staff to, to drive student achievement.
Anything further? Don't go anywhere, Tara. All those in favor then, oh, we don't have to, no, we have to move on to the second one then. All right. This one I will get on the table. This is up for second reading, this is a board policy change. And the recommended motion is the board approve the following policy, the use of instructional technology.
Second.
Thank you. And Tara, do you want to walk us through anything that's changed in this?
Sure, this is just striking requires to better reflect the intent being supports, the use of technology, and then changing staff to department, and then the semantics, trying to tweak cabinet to district leadership team when necessary to clean up the language to reflect our current title.
And as I recall, there were no changes from the first time we saw this to now.
Correct.
In my notes. Does anybody have any questions for Tara on that? All right, seeing none. All those in favor of approving the use of instructional technology, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. The next item on our agenda is item J on page thirty-one. It's our financial information and I would like to turn it over to Michael Coughlin.
Thank you. It's been a few months and you have seen the financial reports in the board packet. We have been talking about how many of these areas and finishing last year and starting into the new year and the audit and the, and the financial reports from the previous year. But I'm bringing you the information for fourteen, fifteen through December. And I'm just going to review what each of the reports represent, just because you have, it's been a few months since you've seen them. On thirty-two and thirty-three, it is all the different funds and the cash activity within those funds, saying what's on hand, what we've spent for revenues and what we've gotten for receipts and what we've spent for expenses and what balances in each of the funds on a cash basis. This is what we would reconcile to our bank statements. On page thirty-four, it's a little more of a general look at revenues and expenditures just for the general fund. And it's showing on the top table that, over the last two years of history and then what we are receiving into fourteen, fifteen year-to-date of the property tax, state aid, other local, state and federal revenue, showing that we are looking at a revenue budget of $129 million, a little over. And through the end of December, we have realized forty-three percent of that revenue coming in, which is right on track with previous years. The expenditures then are divided out by salary benefits, purchase services, supplies and overhead and equipment and the AEA costs, representing $127,600, $600,000. And to this point, we have spent thirty-eight percent of the budget or forty-seven, almost $48 million, which is also very much in line with the previous year. So what I did on the following two pages was show that breakdown of expenditures by function. That's what's going down the left hand of the, left hand of the column, regular instruction, special ed, and so on. And that gives a breakdown by salary and benefits for each one of those areas. And if you look at the bottom right-hand corner of that top table on that page, it's showing thirty-eight percent spent of the budget. So that's what matches the thirty-eight percent on the previous page. The table below that is just showing what has been budgeted in those, all of those areas for the whole year. So you can compare to see where areas, and that's what I use to compare areas that need to be looked at and understood if there's any kind of concern of where the numbers are at. I also did the same thing for thirteen, fourteen on page thirty-six. So you would be looking at the same type of a table on the top of that page, which is showing thirty-nine percent of the budget has been, was spent up to this time last year. So that's why I'm saying the thirty-nine percent from last year, very comparable to the thirty-eight percent this year. And then the full budget for all of the functions and the object codes that go along with those for a hundred percent of the budget. Now, if you're looking at totals, and that would probably be the first question of saying, we have a budget of $120 million last year, it's $127 million this year. One of the first big chunks is, is TLC. So that's added a couple million to that, plus you have all the raises for the salaries, which usually run between three and three and a half million dollars. So you add those two numbers together and you've got most of that seven million dollar difference. And if you do look at, if you look at the budget for regular instruction, which is the top of those tables, it's $59 million. And the year before, it was just under $54 million. So the addition of the budget, the vast majority have been put into instruction. So that's where we want it, that's where we see the value, that's where we see the effect in student achievement. So, but this gives you some comparatives if you want to look at a particular area. And really, the, the thirteen, fourteen number on the second page is not the budget for that year, it's the total actual expenditures. So if you want to see what we actually spent in total last year, you'd find that on the bottom of the second page. And then you could compare that to the budget on the previous page and kind of see where some of the differences are. But that's a continual process that we look at the numbers in lots of different ways to see how they are coming out and compared to last year. And if they are different, does that make sense? And then following, because we always do change a little bit of where money is spent, whether it's a, a salary, whether it's a purchase service. We have different things that go on. And I'll give you one example. In the ELL program, a couple of years ago, all of our interpreters were a purchase service through the three hundred area. And now they're all salaries because of how the law changed. So when you see a reflection of things changing from year to year, sometimes there's a very particular reason. And it's just issues that the state has dictated through how they want it recorded. And we deal with that every year and sometimes on a monthly basis, that the way they want things recorded, the account numbers change a little bit. But you're really looking overall to say, where is the budget for the expenditure compared to the revenues? And that really is a emphasis that the instruction dollars stay strong.
Quick question about that. You mentioned the $5 million difference. That's about ten percent on regular instruction is, so of that ten percent, three of that ten percent would be probably through inflationary.
Yes.
And then the other would be new hires then?
Most of the rest of it is the additional TLC positions, which would be new hires, correct? It's the ed reform.
Okay.
The last page that you see is the diagram of the graphs. I'm going to have to talk to Print Shop and have you get this in color because it makes much sense this way. But it really is, that's why I put the numbers in the boxes, so you can see what our current balance is in all of those, looking at how we compare to previous years. And right now, in the general fund, we are showing a couple of million dollar improvement over the last two years. So we, back in eleven, twelve, we had the best cash flow. We dipped down as we were putting more into student achievement and some of those goals. And we intentionally saw some of that go down for the commitment that we did to student achievement, but it has started building its way back up. So without getting into, all of that will follow and why Mr. Young is not here tonight, is now saying, we have preliminary numbers from the governor and coming out of the House Committee of what new money is going to be and how that affects us. So now the, now the battle starts. Not so much of, from my standpoint of fighting for it, but understanding what we're going to get. And if you remember the issue of saying, we've got Plan A, B, and C on a lot of different areas and we will start gathering that information to be ready for whenever the legislature decides what they are going to do. And what, one thing I, I hope will see fruition is that they actually do approve it two years in, in the hope of saying, then we actually do have a year to plan. And we know what we're shooting at and to budget appropriately, so.
Within thirty days of.
They are, by law, they're supposed to do it within thirty days of the governor's speech.
Which was a week ago, Friday.
Yep.
Been the case, right?
It has not been the case with either party running the. So usually, I mean, money is always an issue that, that is the bargaining chip and, and we have to play into that.
And I think I, I read that in, in two weeks, they will be one year behind on setting allowable growth, one year behind. And I think February twelfth maybe is when it was supposed to be set of last year, so.
Anything further, Michael? Anybody have any questions for Michael? Anything further? Thank you, except me turning on my mic appropriately, so. Thank you, Michael. We'll all be staying tuned, I know. So the next item on our agenda is the superintendent's report and I'll turn it over to Dr. Lindeman.
Sure. As Shanley mentioned, the, excuse me. We are happy to have Mike Young speaking at the hearing tonight in, in Des Moines, as are, I think, educators and, and others from all across the state. I looked at the, the list of comments today that are online and I would encourage people to take a peek at, at the, what, what people are, I guess they're just commenting on the, the 1.25 allowable growth that is being proposed. And there's, you know, they kind of play the, the dance, I guess, or do the dance between 1.25 and six. And, you know, we don't know where it will, will land, but we appreciate him, him being down there. I just wanted to, just a couple of things. First of all, follow-up from the last meeting when we had the three seniors who were here to talk about grades. We've been extremely busy actually since that last, that last meeting. And what happened is, and I know that the paper, I think the, the, the local paper, Andrew, had a headline and it said seniors upset about the, the policy. And I'm not sure that they were upset about the policy, I think they were just upset about the calculation, that, you know, the, the technology glitch. And so we were able to take a peek at that. We've, we've, I guess, gathered the support of, of several people to take a peek at that. And interestingly enough, we're actually really glad that they, they alerted us to that. And interestingly enough, we're actually really glad that they, they alerted us to that because there were a couple of other things that with the switch over from regular to weighted and unweighted and carrying that, that dual system for a little while, there were a couple of other things that weren't firing correctly. And so, it gave us a chance to kind of do just a really deep dive on, on the, the calculation method and what that was looking at, looking like. So, it took us a couple of weeks to just really get that right, but I, I'm confident that it is correct now. And we've actually done a lot of spot checking. And I just give huge kudos to our technology department because they really ran the, took the lead on that. And so, I think, we have it right now, but I, I appreciated that. So, I just wanted to follow up for any parents who are out there wondering if we did follow up on that. We absolutely did. We actually had the opportunity, great opportunity, to have a panel here today. Waterloo Schools is being, has been selected as a finalist for the Cedar Valley Employer Diversity and Inclusion Award. And so, we were nominated and then we went through the first process and they're down to, I don't know how many finalists. We don't know how many, maybe a handful. And so, they, we had a panel here today to, to visit with a group of individuals. And I, I don't know, there might have been 30 people that we had in the room. And it was really, whether we get the award or not, actually is, is somewhat irrelevant at this point in time because it was just heartwarming to be in the room. Angela Weekly was, was there and actually did our opening. It was fun to hear, hear comments like, "I, I feel so welcome here in Waterloo Schools and I think that they are on the right track. We have made a big change. It feels different now from what it did eight years ago." And, and I, I don't know, I'm seeing lots of heads nodding. So, hopefully, I've captured that correctly. So, we will find out in the next couple of months or month or two. I think the award is actually given out in March sometime. So, we'll see, we'll keep you posted on that. But it was really, it was a great experience to have them here today and just kind of, kind of recap everything that we are doing to make sure that people are feeling included and that we're meeting needs of everyone. I just wanted to give a, a couple, a couple of events that I've done recently that were just, just really wonderful. On Saturday, I had the opportunity to go to Kingsley to their, their family parent event. And I was going to say family night, it wasn't a night, it was in the morning. But I've been attending quite a few of those and they are happening all over our district. You know, I've been to some at Kittrelle and Lincoln and Lou Henry and Orange and Carver and, and just, you know, all across the, the district. We are really trying to make sure that parents are feeling welcomed and involved in what their children are doing. So, the, the one on Saturday, the, the children all wore their pajamas and they brought books to read and there were, you know, some, a little bit of light breakfast. And they, they got to do, a, a lot of them brought blankets and they sat down with their families and grandparents and aunts and uncles and just sat down and read together. And they could, they had a little book exchange, you know, they could run out and exchange a book and bring it in. And I actually brought my, my children with me and they loved it. I didn't know that I was going to get them out of there. So, it was just a really, it was really a great event. So, congratulations to, to Kingsley. And then, just another highlight from last week. I met with the high school leadership teams from East and, and West. And we had them in one room. And I just, I couldn't help but applaud the, the optimism that was in the room and the, the leadership that was in the room. It was, it was a fantastic experience. And High School, Sue Pagena is in the audience right now and I know why you work with our high school students because they are absolutely delightful. They are phenomenal thinkers and, and it was just, it was a great experience. So, thank you to those students who, who came down to, to the ESC during the day. And I enjoyed lunch with you.
Thank you. We can move on to information from board members. I started on this side last time, so I'm going to go over here and I'm going to start with Mike Kinsey tonight.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Andrea?
Nothing tonight.
Wow, we're speeding along. Okay. There you should have. Go ahead, Angela.
I, just to piggyback on, I, what a wonderful opportunity it was to participate and to hear as a, as a person who doesn't have a student in the school, but just to sit back and be able to hear all the wonderful things from, from the students, from the interpreters, from the community members. It was just, it was just an awesome way to kind of look at, to look at the district and see what we're doing and how we're being inclusive for all of our students. And it was, it was just amazing and made me feel really good to be sitting then up here tonight to know that that is what we are representing in our, in our district. So, that's all.
Thanks for doing the opening today too, that was awesome.
Nothing.
Nothing? Well, I don't have anything either. I'm going to go down to Union and listen to some jazz because the state jazz band competition is tonight. So, unless there's anything further, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, our meeting's adjourned. Thank you.